Here you go, Pro Tim. All right. Good evening. We're going to call to order the two hundred and sixty-seven session of the tenth council, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to thank Mike McGinnis for the point seven, but I'll be moving this out of the way. So I can see everybody. All right. Roll call.
Carter?
Present.
Miller?
Present.
Hila?
Here.
Stransky? Taylor Burks?
Here.
Waterman? Williams?
Present.
Present, you have one.
All right. I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Waterman.
So much.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Okay. All right. Uh, now, we need a, uh, vote. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Okay. Six yeas, no names.
Okay. All right. Which brings us to amendments to the agenda. I would ask that we move item number eight, uh, right below item number one, approval minutes. Is there a motion?
I will.
Okay. Is there support?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. All right. Any city council discussion? CNN roll call?
Hila?
No.
Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Can't hear you.
No.
Four, four yeas, two names.
Okay. Motion, uh, okay. So that's amended to the agenda. Uh, all right. And then, um, I would ask that we move item, uh, number, uh, eleven B. Uh, after item number eight. Is there a move?
I will.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN roll call?
Stransky? Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
All right. And then I would, uh, ask that we move item number, uh, sixteen off the agenda, um, because, uh, we do not currently have a medical marijuana commission that is recognized.
Support.
All right. Any city council discussion? CNN roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman? Oops, sorry. Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
Okay. Uh, then I would ask that items number three and four be removed from the agenda. Is there a motion?
So much.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? CNN roll call?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
Okay. And one thing I forgot to omit that I would like to move, uh, below item, uh, eleven B, which would be the actual, uh, sheriff's contract, item number fourteen. Is there a move?
Move.
So much. Support.
All right. It's been moved and supported.
Ten after eleven.
Yeah. All right. Any discussion?
Uh, just quick, uh, just getting information. Do we get a sound check? Getting information that the, the sound sound like crap? Sorry.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, can you just, um, restate which ones you removed? Did you remove sixteen?
Yes. Removed, uh, items number three, four, and sixteen from the agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as am-
You need to, you need to hold on this move fourteen after eleven.
Council President?
Roll, uh, hold on. Um, okay. Um, roll call on, uh, moving item number fourteen, the sheriff contract after eleven?
After eleven B.
Uh, after eleven B?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila? Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
Attorney Clark?
President. So items, um, six and seven are regarding Cypria.
Okay. We, we haven't addressed those at all. So what I'm saying to you is this is just moving up items on the agenda. Um, so, um, they're still on the agenda. We didn't remove them.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? CNN roll call?
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
All right. Which brings us to item number one, uh, which is approval minutes from December seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there support? Yes. Okay. Is the mayor returning to the meeting? Uh, excuse me. Um, uh, yeah. This is, this is not effective i- immediately. So I don't know, um, is the mayor returning? Or she's just taking a temporary break? Attorney Clark?
Was just handed an email.
Yeah. We were all just handed the email just, just now. That doesn't make it, uh, official. So I don't, I don't understand what. It has to be sent to the clerk and received and all that other procedure according to the charter. So this is not happening during the meeting. So.
All right. Well, let me take a look at the, uh, at the charter real quickly.
The charter says-
Let's find out what the email is about.
It's in the charter.
Yeah. What did, what did the deputy mayor, interim deputy mayor hand to him?
No. We, uh, we all got, got an email saying, uh, "Dear council and interim clerk, uh, Mayor Highland is the interim deputy mayor of the city of Pontiac. As such, in accordance with the charter provision, for my absence, I designate him as an alternate should be necessary for me to miss any and all parts of the city council meeting."
You received that, but we didn't-
No. What I'm saying to you is we, we just, we just got this two seconds ago. So either way, it's not valid because it's not going through the charter. So it doesn't matter what email. So.
Yes, it is. It's the deputy mayor, the deputy mayor attending the meeting.
He's not the deputy.
We voted him down. We voted him down.
I thought he was here in term.
No.
After so many, after so many weeks, he doesn't have to be confirmed.
So if the mayor's not going to attend, she can possibly cost the city, I believe, is seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars for sidewalks that have to be voted on today, uh, in order for them to make the deadline, uh, with our block grant money. So Attorney Clark, if you want to talk to her, I, I don't know, uh, what the ceremonial stance is right now.
I don't know, but my-
Suggestion would be if you wanted to move up public comment at this point, and then let me take a look at it.
Uh, no. We're, we're not going to do that. So, uh, we need to get clarity on this. Um, everybody is busy people. She was here, and so she chose to leave out.
She took a two-minute recess.
Yep. So, and do you need us to take a two-minute recess, uh, Attorney Clark, so you can get some clarity?
I would appreciate that.
All right. Two minutes.
Council President?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
She says by letter filed with the city clerk. Who wouldn't?
How old are they personally?
Right. It says by letter filed with the city clerk.
Patrice.
Right. And she would have had to do it before the meeting.
Yeah. Sarah gave me that new baby four years ago.
Just keep it running.
Really? I got a picture of it, girl. My, uh, beautician, and she says, uh, 'cause I give up these, and she showed me hers, and she kept, I'm like, I can't keep nothing. Oh, my goodness, Mary. Get out of here. Oh, wonderful.
I've had as many as four blooms out of that one time. It's still adjusting to the move that we made in September.
You going, going skiing tonight? I mean, seems like we're gonna have an early meeting. So no, I'm, I'm just asking. Seems, seems like the meeting will be very short. I mean, this, this would typically be the moment that you yell at the council, "Mr. Gibbs," and say, "We can't give up eight hundred thousand." So I just, you know, just, yeah.
We don't do anything with it once they're excused for not being here. If they come late, they're here. We don't change anything. Go on. Sorry, Kermit.
Excuse me. If everybody can take a seat, please. Thank you.
So, Council, Council President?
Yes.
Pursuant to the charter, the, the, uh, council cannot meet.
Okay. All right. So what happens, uh, Mr. Clark? What happens, uh, to the public hearing that was properly noticed?
What happens with the contracts that expire?
Well, I mean, if, if the council isn't going to take action on the public hearing, I, I don't see an issue with the proceeding. As long as no action will be taken.
But it's, there's no point in having a public-
Not take any official action this evening. There can't be anything unofficially, no resolutions, no consideration. I, I, I don't have an issue with public comment or if there wants to be people comment on the, uh, on the CDPG issue.
So, uh, we're gonna, uh, open up the public comment. I mean, the public hearing. We're gonna open up the public hearing. Uh, I'm going to start the public hearing. Let me make sure it's two minutes, right? Mr. Clark? Okay. Okay. We're gonna open up, uh, the public hearing on the CDPG, uh, monies, uh, for item number eleven B, which is, uh, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars to sidewalks. The public hearing is open at six fifteen.
Hello. My name is Billy Swizer. Sixteen nineteen, March Bank Drive in Pontiac. And I support the use of the funds for the sidewalks. I can't tell you how many hundreds of miles it is in Pontiac that our sidewalks are deplorable. But you can't go through a neighborhood in this city without finding sidewalks that are raised, cracked, and broken up. I would hope that they would, the city would make sure they spend this money and do it correctly and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't understand how you can go ahead with this particular, uh, part of the meeting if the mayor's not here. If you, if you indicated that the council can't function without the mayor being in the room.
We don't respond during public comment. I'm just waiting.
Well, that's the problem with, that's the problem up there. And I'll say that in my comment, ma- comment, period.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Uh, for clarity's sake, uh, according to the Open Meetings Act, the council, well, according to the charter, the council can't take official action as a body. Listening to a public hearing that was noticed in the paper is not taking any official action, but it is doing the process to save possibly eight hundred thousand dollars of, uh, CDPG grand dollars. So if you don't want us to do that, uh, I can understand that. Uh, we'll continue with public comment. The public comment is now open. Public hearing is now open. It's, it's still open. It's still open.
It is open.
Okay. No other people for a public hearing on sidewalks. We're gonna close the public hearing at six seventeen. And now we will open it up for public comments. Pro Tim Carter.
Uh, first off, first up would be Mr. Chuck Johnson, and then, um, Mr. Buck Johnson on deck. I thought you were getting to my opening, but you know, this is the same reason why this government has failed the citizens of this community, of this city, for the last eight to ten years. It's all because of hate between three of you. Gloria, you, uh, Kermit, and, and Patrice. You guys should bring your damn hammers to the council meeting when you say you can get over there and beat the hell out of the mayor, 'cause that's what you want to do. You set up and called the police on me because I sat over there, and you said I cussed. I didn't cuss, but you, you had the authority with that hammer. But you know what? The three of you is the cause of this city failing. You the cause of that mayor not being able to do her job the way she was appointed to do and, and, and voted to do. All of you are, are disgrace. You're a disgrace to this city government. And you know what? I'm so damn glad to see you go. Now, call the police to help put me out for cussing, as you would say, Kermit. I got something I wanted to say to you one-on-one, but I'm gonna save that because it's too many women in here. Okay. Thank you very much. Up, up on deck will be Buck Johnson, and then Mr. Kenny Anderson. Buck Johnson, once, twice. Mr. Kenny Anderson on deck. And then H. Bill Maxi behind Kenny.
Good evening. And the struggle for black democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is black trauma matters. Indeed, all of us have heard the emotional distress term "trauma." I would also assume that all of us heard about the unfortunate school shooting in Oxford, where tragically three students were killed and at least eight were injured. What is interesting, but not surprising, was that there was a major call for support and resources for coping with trauma to deal with this terrible event that's going to have lasting negative psychological effects on students and the overall citizen population of Oxford. I totally get the need for trauma counseling intervention. However, I'm mindful that Oxford is ninety-six percent white. The black population is less than one percent. Like everything else in racist America, trauma support is race-based. Yes. When white America suffers from a terrible event, there is greater sensitivity, compassion, and assistance. You know, white lives matter to the utmost. In contrast, throughout history in America, blacks have suffered from massive trauma, from slavery, Jim Crow, mass lynching, to skeege experimentation, and Hurricane Katrina, just to name a few. During these terrible racist events, there was no trauma support. You know, black trauma don't matter. You know, we got to suck up the trauma. Take an emotional distress leak and just keep on ticking. Every day in majority-black cities across the U.S., there is massive gun violence death, especially black-on-black male homicides. All these gun violence deaths result in black community trauma, where many blacks suffer from undiagnosed and untreated post-traumatic stress disorder. Not only do blacks suffer from gun violence trauma, we suffer from racist trauma. This compounded stress is sickening and deadly. The stress of being black is killing us. I want to ask black folks in Pontiac a question. With all the black gun violence deaths in this city, from the nineteen seventies up until now, when was trauma support brought in to address community trauma? It never did. As a part of heightening that black lives matter, black trauma must matter too. We must develop community trauma programs that addresses violence prevention, post-traumatic stress disorder, and disabling greed. Black folks, the facts tell us the truth that trauma support is based on race. We must become our own trauma healers. The struggle continues.
Thanks, sir. Mr. H. Bill Maxi and Billy Swizer on deck.
Good evening. H. Bill Maxi, addressing to, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, Community Lodge, and governance. Three things I want to speak on tonight that really affect the quality of life of our veterans, my veterans, and the homeless and contractors. Next week, I hope to have a list and a telephone number. We are prepared to serve our homeless and our veterans in shoes, food, and some underwear clothing. This is what we have done every year for the last three years, with exception of the emphasis on shoes. Secondly, contract complainers and contractors who have been denied part of the process for the last three, four, five, or six years. It is time for contractors. Let us get together, let's look at the internet, really let's look at Facebook for our next meeting. We had fifteen contractors the first time we met. The next meeting, we had four. If we're talking about bringing equality and bringing parity and equal opportunity contractors, you have got to step up and speak your piece and be present. Even if you don't say anything, be present. Let the current, not the administration, but let the person in charge of DPW now know what's happening. There is no need for contractors to continually sit by the side when the dava does not turn around thirteen times in the city of Pontiac. I have about nineteen pictures of all the construction going on. From sidewalks, your streets, and guess what? Not even two percent are business owned by African-Americans. So looking forward to twenty-two, many of the times, it's up to the community. Stop listening to gossip, and people running around not doing research, not knowing what they're talking about. I want my veterans to have shoes, underwear, and clothes. I want my seniors to have attention to the DTEs. A lot of things for seniors. Let these so-called leaders run your mouth, but you don't even call DTE and find out what's happened to assist them. Last but not least, step up. Step up. Keep your eyes open and watch the fakers. They haven't got one, one ounce of resources. But as a community as a whole, you know who we are as trailblazers and leaders in this city. We've got to do better again about our veterans, our homeless, and our seniors. And I look forward to twenty-twenty-two. Changes will be made. Our change is not going to come, it's began already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxi. This is Billy Swizer, and, uh, is it Kathy Benelli on deck? Thank you, dear.
Good afternoon. No. My name is Billy Swizer. You've seen me here before, and I am a Pontiac resident. I'm a member of the GERS board, uh, a member of the SEEPR board, Pontiac resident and retiree. I have, um, a memo which was sent to me by Claudia Feller of the SEEPR board, and part of it reads, "The mayor's initial proposal related to the permanent enhancement benefit was intended as a prospective benefit to be added to and accounted for in the re- reestablish GERS after the final March thirty-first."
Excuse me, uh, Ms. Swizer, I'm gonna restart your time. Can you please turn off all cell phones or devices? Thank you.
Okay. The mayor's, I'm gonna read your part of the memo that was sent to me by Claudia Feller from SEEPR. The mayor's part, in part, it reads, "The mayor's initial proposed, related, proposal related to a permanent enhanced benefit was intended as a prospective benefit to be added into the, and accounted for in the reestablish GERS after the final March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one valuation for the terminated GERS was completed and after the terminated GERS had distributed assets to reestablish GERS Viva and opt-out. For those people who have opted out, it is expected that the GERS will send the money to the city, the eight million dollars, next week, and you get your checks no later than December twenty-first. Uh, that will be confirmed at my Thursday meeting with the GERS board. Let us all be clear. The four hundred dollars is no longer on the table. The four hundred dollars enhanced permanent benefit is no longer on the table. The mayor was totally against it. So, and SEEPR was totally against it. The, the executive board, um, there was four of us, there were four, and the other five was against it. The lawyer, Alec Gibbs, was against it. He talked to Attorney Clark, Attorney Copass, and Attorney Warren, Rick Warren. After that, I was told it is not gonna go through. That SEEPR has decided that they would follow suit, is threatening to follow suit, as the city gave us the four hundred dollars. It would take fifty-nine million dollars and for the enhanced benefit to go through and be made permanent. The new, the super Viva will be funded at two hundred percent after they get the money from GERS. They're gonna get the money from the police and fire Viva, and then they're gonna get the money from the- get the money from the super GERS. The money that they were used, the study that they were used for the insurance benefit included people that were dead, some since two thousand eleven. They included people that have left the city, and they included a lot of people that did not have ten years. The city's past practice has been that you have to have ten years in order to get a benefit, and that would be if you want insurance, you had to have ten years. We'll have our GERS meeting on Thursday, and I'll see you next week.
Somebody else is trying, don't you try to make me take all the people's time? Just want to clean up.
All right. And Laura Kenny will be after you on deck.
Okay. Hello, I'm Kathy McAnally, Pontiac General Hospital retiree and a member of the GERS system. I am not here tonight to beg you to pass the four hundred dollar perpetual increase for the retirees, as I'm sure that horse has been beaten to death. I would like to say that I am tired of hearing everyone blame the delay in the city retirees receiving their health insurance or opt-out benefit on the GERS Board. I believe this issue has more to do with the city and SEEPRA viva personnel who are responsible for selecting the vendor and the plan to be offered to the retirees and the handling of the open enrollment. Letters did go out earlier in the year for retirees to make their selection. At that time, some hospital retirees also received the letter, and many called me to see how they could go about getting the insurance or the twenty thousand dollar opt-out. I explained to them that it was not for hospital retirees, only city retirees. It's obvious that the parties to be did not get a list of eligible retirees from the GERS Board, as that would not have included hospital retirees with it. Then December third, letters were mailed once again. This time, it appears as though letters were sent to many more or all hospital retirees. I have spent the last week addressing issues with hospital retirees, as they were concerned that when they received the letter, they only had one or two days to sign it, get it notarized, and get it back to either get the insurance or opt-out. Once again, we know that hospital retirees are not eligible for it, and I basically had to tell everybody, this letter was sent to them in error, and that you should toss it out. Some of the hospital retirees said they wanted to send it back, and I have to tell you, I tried to discourage them, because I know that's going to be another delay that's going to be blamed on us, but there may be some that went through. I do have to say that the retirement office has also fielded calls all this week. We know that retirees are not, hospital retirees are not eligible for this, but every time one of these letters comes out, all this does is add fuel to the flames with retirees who are already upset. It is my understanding that the information that was given out to the third-party vendor working with viva included our names, addresses, and our birth dates, and this is information that really should not have been given out on hospital retirees. So please, everyone, just get your acts together, work together, get it done, and leave us out of it, so I don't have to keep dealing with irate hospital retirees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura, and then Pastor Kathy on deck.
I didn't really write up a formal speech. My name's Laura Kenny, I'm a retiree from the hospital. I put in forty years of working as a nurse at the hospital. I trained there in nineteen seventy-one. At that, I probably was in the delivery room when some of you people were born, assisting your mother's OB physician, okay? I had the chance at that time to go to St. Joseph's Hospital to work or POH. I had a Catholic education, so I was about sick of the nuns. So that was not an option at that point. So there was POH, and there was the City of Pontiac Hospital. Well, the City of Pontiac Hospital offered a pension fund, and that kind assuaged me, along with the wonderful people that I had met at the hospital. I trained at William Beaumont for eight weeks, and found them kind of snobby and stiffy and not willing to help a young student nurse trying to get an education. So I chose the City of Pontiac, the quality of people, the caring, the giving people that I saw there, the Black and the White. They all treated me the same. A young, eager nurse, ready to start my career and learn as much as I could, okay? You decided to privatize the hospital in two hundred and four. I didn't want to be ripped out of the pension program. I wanted to stay, and I wanted to put some more money in the program, but that wasn't an option, okay? So we were thrown into some other kind of program. So that did cut my pension. Gentlemen that talked about PTSD, I know all about PTSD. I spent twenty years in the ER on the midnight shift. I saw things that are unthinkable. There was no help for me, there was no counseling for PTSD, but the four hundred dollars that I get extra helps me buy health insurance, okay? Helps me buy health insurance, helps me buy my medication. It makes my life a little bit easier. I'm a lot, I can stay in my home, I can pay my taxes, I can buy good healthcare, so I can go to the physician and get the medication that I need to live out the last few years I have left. All we're asking for is, the elderly senior people might have ten more years left, and then the debt will be paid, and it was our money anyway, it was the pensioner's money anyway. We're not asking for something that isn't ours.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Kathy, for all the work that you have done.
By the way, is there a bomb-bath here tonight?
Ah, Sam.
Okay. Pastor Kathy, and then James, you'll be on deck next.
I have a couple of things tonight. For people who are running for Charter Commission or any special election, we've been given information that may or may not be correct. When I called the county to double-check it because things had changed, they don't want to give me any information when it comes to city elections in Pontiac, and I can't reach anybody at state level. So I would like clarification, please, on the number of signatures that are required, why we were given one month to get signatures in for an election that's five months away, and I'll stop there. But it's interesting that we can't get what we need. The mayor's not here, and although she and I vehemently disagree politically, I did want to thank her for her years of service to the community and wish her well in whatever she's going to do from here on. Most importantly, I want to thank you guys at the council. Hasn't been an easy ride, and I thank you for your years of service, especially those of you who've been there a long time, been through some tough, tough times. Thanks for the stress, and thanks for the, many times, your personal sacrifice. People don't realize how much you give up. Maybe it isn't all that you wanted it to be, but from my heart to yours, well done, good and faithful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
James, and then Veronica on deck.
James, Veronica.
James here. I would reiterate her comments about the council. I thank you for your efforts. I've attempted to be a student. I'm sure we've all come away with an education, especially through these last couple of years.
It's not working?
It's working. He just had it down, and Maxey was trying to help him.
Hi, Jane.
Hello?
Yeah.
Please continue, Jane.
Well, that's the main thing I want to share. I want to thank the council, and I think everyone in the public and the council came away with a more intelligent mind, more understanding mind after these four years, or four years plus that some of you have experienced. I would close with Proverbs four seven, as I have in the past, "The wisdom is the prime Acquire wisdom in with all that you acquire. Acquire understanding. It's not an easy objective. It's easier said than done. Everything said is not as it seems to be. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and the public. Be patient and understanding in the future.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Veronica Taylor and Ms. Quinetta is on deck, and then Worthheimer.
First, I give honor to God, who's the head of all of our lives. I want to thank this councilman in y'all last few weeks. A lot of us haven't seen and seen all the pain that we have been going through in these last four years, and y'all sit there diligently, taking on these roles that the people have voted you into. I would like to thank you personally as being a resident of Pontiac. Y'all have stood as troopers, and I want you all to understand, everybody don't get along, but y'all did a good job in this city while y'all was a part of this council. Everything ain't flowed right, and feelings untapped, but y'all had the best interest for the City of Pontiac, for each district from one through seven, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and may God continue to bless each and every one of you all, and may y'all life have a very good, prosper. Amen.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say thank you to the council for giving your time and effort and trying to help move our community forward. Much appreciated. Mayor Waterman, farewell. As a resident of District One, I wanted to say to Patrice Waterman, thank you for all that you've done for us over in District One. Thank you for carrying yourself always with grace and class. You are beautiful and intelligent, and much appreciated. So I have a few things for you. So I have a certificate. I'll take it to her. I have a certificate from Grassroots Phone Banking. It's an award, just to acknowledge and say thank you. And then also, we have a plaque for you.
Oh, that's so nice.
Councilwoman Patrice Waterman. The City of Pontiac would like to thank you for serving as a councilwoman for twelve years. You are very loved, you will be missed greatly, no one will ever have as much class as you.
Okay.
That was so nice.
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry. Jonathan, you'll be next.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is special tribute from State Representative Brenda Carter to five of the city council members, from her representative, Jonathan Worthheimer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jonathan Worthheimer, and I am the Policy Director for State Representative Brenda Carter. I am here tonight to honor our outgoing council members on behalf of Representative Carter. Mayor Waterman, Councilwoman Waterman, and President Williams have already received their tributes, so tonight's tributes are for Councilpeople Schramansky, Pedala, Taylor Burks, Miller, and Pro Tem Carter. Now, this is an interesting statistic. In total, this council and mayor have served the City of Pontiac for more than sixty-nine years. Before me is a group of dedicated public servants who have earned our respect, and we at the State of Michigan are proud to offer these tributes, signed by State Representative Brenda Carter, State Senator Rosemary Bear, Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist, and Governor Gretchen Whitmer. Please accept these tributes as a token of our appreciation for your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. President?
Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn this meeting at six forty-five.